Okay, I'm gonna start a few minutes early only because tonight we are going to record and I wanted to make sure you realise that you're on camera, as it were, before you're on camera. So just be warned that tonight, we've not done it before because we were kind of getting self-used to the committee and everything else, but tonight we will be filmed. So I'll just do the announcements, the emergency evacuation procedures. In the case of a fire, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the building immediately following the green fire exit signs out to the assembly point, which is by the War Memorial. If people need assistance, just let us know. Lists should not be used. And remain at the assembly point and do not attempt to return into the building until you've been advised to do so. You know the toilets are at the end of the corridor, I don't need to explain that again. And as I say, just to re-emphasise, we are going to film the meeting this evening and it's now gone live. Can I also remind you that when you're speaking, that you need to turn your microphone on and get close enough to it so that we can all hear? Okay? Thank you. So, minutes of the last meeting held on the 19th of October, these have all been pre-circulated. Are there any comments on the minutes? councillor Steele?
Yes, it's to do with the, it's on page, page eight. Can you hear me okay? Get that closer. It's to do with the vote that was taken in relation to the PSPO. And I have to say, I was rather confused at the meeting, but I'm raising this now because I don't think the minutes reflect what actually happened. My recollection, my recollection, and perhaps others can also think about this and have a view, my recollection is that we were having a long debate about it and it was stated that constitutionally, the first vote had to be whether we rejected the recommendation or not, and that was the vote I was expecting to happen. And then for some reason, we got to councillor Dobson's amendment and we voted on the amendment. And I was sitting here expecting to vote on whether we were accepting or rejecting the recommendation, or the cabinet decision. And then, when we had a vote on the amendment, I think you, as Chair, asked if anybody was in favour of it and two hands went up, and that was the end of it. There was no call for hands up for rejecting the motion, the amendment, and there was no call for abstentions, because it could have been, it would have been one on two votes. So I think the vote should not stand, actually. And I would ask if anybody else had that same recollection as me?
I certainly had a slightly different one.
Thank you. I do believe that, that the vote was called for and against the proposed amendment, because I remember distinctly thinking that the vote, oh, it hadn't gone entirely according to party lines, there were some exceptions, there were exceptions. So that stuck in my memory, that the vote was taken against, as well as for, but I'm, I'm not going to get involved in the rest of the procedural stuff, that's just my recollection.
Does anyone else want to comment before I? I'm kind of concurring with the second comment, because I think I did propose that there could be an alteration and it was said that constitutionally we couldn't, so we voted that it wouldn't, that the representations against would not go ahead, and it went through. So I think-
Sorry, can you just clarify that? I didn't quite catch that.
We did, as I understand it, have a vote as to whether we were going to vote against the proposal for the public protection safety order, and the vote went against, went, that it would remain as it went to Cabinet-
But there were two votes, as for, I'll ask councillor Dobson if she has that recollection. So if it was two, in fact, it was councillor Dobson and councillor Taylor who put their hands up as for, so surely that must have been the amendment that was being voted for, not, not the cabinet decision?
My recollection was, we voted on both, because we put forward the amendment and then we put forward whether we, it went through or not-
Can we not check the recording?
We didn't record.
Well, actually, it's not my, it's not my recollection, I'll have to, I'll have to differ from you then.
Okay, but thank you anyway. Councillor Dobson?
Sorry, I have a, just a very minor point, actually, just as a small typo on the minutes, actually. On page three of the minutes, in the first paragraph, about two-thirds of the way down, it says, "Members were advised that Highlands PSPO would only allow four dogs per dog as these were in line." Four dogs per dog. You'll get a ticket, there'll be five, won't he?
Thank you for that. Is there any other alterations or any other comments? Councillor?
Can my discreet with the minutes be actually recorded?
Of course it can.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Can we now approve the minutes as they are written with the alterations and obviously the recognition of councillor Steele's comments? Thank you. I'm now going to move to the decision and action sheet. I think the decision sheet is fairly clear, unless there's any comments on those decisions that have been made on that, then I will move on to the outstanding actions. Are there any comments on the decisions? Action points, one of the first action points is that we were going to reformulate the task and finish group, but there would be new members, and it was agreed that we would recirculate the original terms of reference, in order that they could be looked at by both the people that had previously been part of the group and the new members, so that they could make comment and approve those terms of reference. That is still in the process of being circulated and will be done after this meeting, there needs to be some clarification of membership of the group. The next item was the work programme, which I think is all fairly clear, with the outstanding matters of the youth engagement and the different dates for when these are going to appear, and the theatre refurbishment review to be reformulated is also on there as discussed. Are there any comments on the action points? Are there any declarations of interest, item five? Can I take it silence means there is no declarations? And I've actually missed out apologies for absence and substitutions, so if you want to go through those, Jan?
Thank you, Chair. We have received apologies from councillor Cunningham, councillor Davy and councillor Deakin. I believe councillor Davy will be substituting for councillor Deakin. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public question time, we don't appear to have any members of the public and I don't recall seeing anything about questions being pre-submitted, so there are no public questions. Decisions called in, there are no new decisions called in. So we will now go to item eight, the report on the cultural strategy and task and finish. And can I also just advise that we're going to swap item 10 and make it nine, and put nine to where 10 is, in order that that flows better, because one leads into the other. So if we just go to item eight now, that's the report on the cultural strategy and task and finish group.
Hello, everybody, and thank you very much for inviting me here today. My name's Claire Givaud, I'm the Chief Executive of Culture. Is that better? Hello, I'm Claire Givaud, I'm Chief Executive of Culture Chelmsford. I'm here today to talk to you a bit about where we've got to with the cultural strategy and what's happening next, over the next 18 to 24 months, so it brings you up to speed on what we're trying to achieve. Culture Chelmsford, you may remember, is an independent charity which was set up by the council in 2017, 2018, and particularly in the last two years since I've taken over as Chief Executive, we've been working with the council as well as a number of stakeholders across the whole city, to bring the city together with culture and communities at the heart of that vision. I just want to remind you a little bit about where we've come from and the development of the cultural strategy. So we commissioned the first ever district-wide cultural strategy for Chelmsford earlier on, well, actually at the end of last year, and that was published in March this year. The idea behind the strategy was putting communities at the heart of everything that we do, but also making sure that Chelmsford was kind of put on the map with a robust cultural leadership, resourcing and a plan for the next 10 years. The scope of the strategy was to define culture in its broadest sense, that it looked at the creative economy of Chelmsford and recognised the rich heritage that was already here, and covered, most importantly, the wider district of Chelmsford. So it was very much about including all the parishes, the town of Southwood and Ferris and the city centre. There was an awful lot of fantastic consultation and activity that had gone on in the past five years, that we were able to review through a piece of desk research, so a lot of that research had already been done, but we added to that was some more consultation, particularly around the wider district, looking to find some of those less represented voices, particularly from Southwood and Ferris, Danbury and Rittle. So at the end of all of that, we had a vision and we had a strategy, and there were a number of themes and a number of principles that came out very strongly through the strategy and through all the consultation. The vision is that Chelmsford is celebrated as a culturally ambitious place, that connects our heritage of science, engineering, with a vibrant future of wellbeing, environment and creativity, ultimately transforming our people's lives. And to do that, we're focusing on three themes. Environment, the built natural and, and kind of context of people in our, in our district and our city, so thinking about how the natural environment, but also the built environment is a kind of dynamic part of our cultural offer, but also thinking about the creative sector and our people in the city. Health and wellbeing was the second major theme, and thinking about how culture can help support and influence the kind of improvement in mental and physical health of our communities, and how that can be visible across the community, and how we can start to join up culture and health together. And finally, the third theme was outstanding festivals and events. We are a district of incredible festivals and events, we have an inspiring range of high-quality festivals, whether they are delivered in communities or some of the kind of more commercial offer, but the strategy was seeking to really understand what would it take to be an outstanding city of festival and events, and what are the things that we need to do to support that strategy and join our festival and events up together. Within those three themes, there are seven principles that weave through those themes, and they're all the things that you would expect to underlie those themes in terms of pinning them all together, so things like equity, diversity and inclusion, young people being a kind of, you know, the focus of the strategy through all those themes, innovation, trans-disciplinary work, thinking about how we have worked as a city in our heritage, in our, in our past, around bringing different sectors together, around arts, science, education, engineering. Starting from a strength-based approach, I think the strategy really recognises that there is an awful lot that has already happened in Chelmsford, and we want to kind of, we want to build on that first, rather than plugging in gaps before we actually really understand where our strengths are. Collaboration and knowledge sharing is a really important way of underpinning how the cultural sector operates at its best, using places like Ignite as an exemplar of bringing the community together. And sustainability, with the natural landscape and growth ambitions, how does this strategy help our cultural community and our communities really think about how it's connected to the landscape and the wider ecology? So those seven principles underpin the three themes of the strategy, and then the idea was the recommendations through that strategy were how we were going to bring that to life and how we were going to get a citywide commitment. So what I want to talk to you a bit about this afternoon, or this evening, is about how to get that collaborative commitment across the whole city. This is the timeline that we are working to. I've just explained where we've come from, so we have the strategy, the first district-wide cultural strategy that was published in March. Throughout the summer, we have been work, well, throughout the spring and summer, we were working on a community engagement project called Number 11, The Meadows, but since July, we've been refocusing our attention back to how do we actually deliver this cultural strategy, and developing an action plan and some working groups. And one of the major recommendations from the cultural strategy was to set up something called a cultural compact for Chelmsford. There are a number of cultural compacts across the UK, there are about 19 or 20, they've been invested in in the past through Arts Council England and others, and they are seen within the cultural world as a very good example of a city coming together to invest collectively in culture, so that the commitment is spread across many partners, not just one. By the time we have produced our strategy, I'm just going to flick forward another slide because I've talked through the strategy, so I'm going to flick to the next one. The cultural compact itself is something that has to do two things, it has to speak to our stakeholders, it has to engage our stakeholders in understanding their commitment and their responsibility to putting culture at the forefront of their policies and their strategies and plans, but it also has to listen to what's actually going on the ground and it has to listen to the needs of our communities. So the cultural compact model is one that listens and responds to itself. On the one hand, we've got working groups that respond to those kind of local community needs, and on the other hand, we've got a strategic oversight group. So from July up until sort of this time of year, around about now, I'm, I'm working very hard with a number of people within the room to get this cultural compact set up. I'm just going to talk a little bit more about the working groups in particular. So we have set up some of these working groups already, not wanting to kind of stop anything or prevent anything from happening whilst we get the oversight group set up. And the working groups that we've set up so far are a cultural and health working group, which was set up in July. The membership of that group, it came out of the Live Well Group, which is set up by the council, but we've also included not just health organisations but cultural organisations, as well as community groups, third sector, public sector and people with lived experience. The main task for that group will be to support a piece of mapping, to really understand what's the existing culture and health offer across Chelmsford, and that piece of work is currently being fundraised for, with Anglo-Ruskin University taking the lead on that, with some funds through the UK SBF funding for 2324 and then also 2425. The idea is, at the end of that piece of research, we'll have a really clear picture of how culture and health could be connected with some recommendations, which we can then trial through some pilot projects, and things like social prescribing is very much expected to come through that route. The timeline for that is, is we're hoping to find out next week whether we've got some internal funding from ARU, and then that project will start in December and run through until June, with the pilot projects happening from June until next April. We're also about to set up a festival and events working group, acknowledging that we have a number of different approaches to festivals and events across the district, that will be set up later on in December, and the membership for that will include cultural organisations, community groups, businesses, those people who are running, producing, delivering festivals and events across the city, and making sure that we include the whole district in those conversations. The steering group will look at a festival and events strategy that will be testing pilots, a number of different pilots, we'll have a, an evaluation framework for all of the pilots, so that we can really understand the role of festivals and events in Chelmsford and how they contribute to things like civic pride or health and wellbeing. We're going to look at how all those festivals and events are accessible in terms of the creative activities and participation, and some of the fund, initial funding from that will come from the city council's events budget, but also leveraging some of the funding through the cultural compact. We hope that that will start in December and that will run for a year, so we'll be finished with that piece of work by December next year. Another piece of work that will start in early 24, one of the things that the cultural strategy identified was a lack of destination and marketing across the city, joined up destination and marketing across the city. So again, we want to set up a working group that's really starting to think about how do we think about our visitor economy, how do we become a place that is not just for kind of people to live, work and play here, but also to visit as well. Organisations across Chelmsford that are interested in a district-wide investment strategy will come together to help steer that, that piece of work, and we've put some funding aside through the cultural compact to ensure that we can produce that piece of work, have a strategy, have a management plan, and then hopefully that will be completed in early 2024 and start to see some work coming towards the end of spring 2024. In March next year, we will set up a community working group, and the role of that group is really important, not just in the work and the, the series of tasks that they will deliver, but also the fact that they will look at all of these working groups and ensure that there is community membership in each one of them. They will also be involved in steering various different engagement programmes that Culture Chelmsford will develop with them, to make sure that we've got community representation and we've got ambassadors in those communities. We're going to try and set that up in March next year, and we'll be using funding from our wider fundraising and through the cultural compact to deliver a series of pilot projects next year. Within those working groups, we've already, we've scooped up a couple that are already existing, so that's Ignite, which was set up in 2017, which is the, representing the voice of the creative community with an associated action plan, and then LSEP, the Local Cultural Education Partnership, which was set up in 2021, which is a jointly funded project through the council and through Royal Opera House Bridge, as, and with Culture Chelmsford as the fund holder. So there are a number of working groups, they are a number, there are a number of tasks and actions that they will be developing over the next couple of years, and Culture Chelmsford's role will be to facilitate all of those working groups and the actions that they're delivering. That's one side of the cultural compact, and the other side of the cultural compact is the strategic oversight group. This is what we are focusing on at the moment, because this group of organisations coming together to really put that commitment in their strategy, in their policy, but also some financial and in-kind commitment into the city, will be a really important leverage for future fundraising for Culture Chelmsford, but also to bring in wider investment into the city. At the moment, we have, the, the kind of top list of organisations have all indicated a very warm reception to being part of the cultural compact, and at the moment, I'm just going through each one of them, itemising their, their offer, and then hopefully signing them up through a collaboration agreement, so that we can have a first meeting in March. There's a number of organisations that we have yet to speak to, and the strategic oversight group can be quite a fluid membership, with people coming on for a three-year term. The next steps around that is to secure all those commitments through a collaboration agreement, appoint a chair and then have a meeting, actually it's going to be in March, not February. So both sides of that, that cultural compact are really, really important, and as are, as is the work of the working groups, because this is all about filling in gaps of knowledge. So we are on a trajectory and a plan over the next 18 months to make sure that we position ourselves as much as possible to be able to leverage in other funding for the city and have some of those gaps in our knowledge field. I want to show this slide because it's really important that you understand that this is not just the council contributing financially and in-kind to the future of, of culture in Chelmsford. The strategic oversight group over three years will look like this pie chart, which is showing the kind of level of percentage investment from different organisations, different types of bodies. So commercial partners is the 21% blue at the top, and then working down from education partners, leisure partners, community, public sector, housing, health, other business investors, and then also things like private donors, legacy investments and grants, grants being the 38%, the largest chunk. And a lot of the role of Culture Chelmsford going forward will be to leverage in those grants, but also to build up a, a private donor base as well. So by the end of April next year, we will have developed a fundraising and investment strategy that will achieve that goal over the next three years. Just bringing you back to the timeline, we've got our strategy, we've got an action plan based around the recommendations in the strategy, and we're starting to fill in the gaps through both the strategic oversight group filling in funding, but also the working group looking at various different pieces of work. The other piece of work that I should mention is a wider mapping piece that ARU again is hopefully supporting us on, which is to look at our creative assets of Chelmsford. So one of the things that we don't know at the moment is how many people work in the creative industries, what kind of work they do, whether they're full-time, part-time, what kind of sectors they particularly work in. We don't really know any of that information enough to be able to make some very good predictions from it, so that piece of mapping of our creative sector, as well as our creative assets, our physical buildings, will also take place over the next few months and hopefully be done in the first quarter of next year. So we're kind of on our way to this kind of year one getting ready, getting all of our ducks in a row, looking at the mapping, getting the information together, to be able to really understand what's the benchmark that we're working from, and therefore, what does success look like? How are we going to measure that? We can't know how we're going to measure that until we know where we're measuring it from, so that's the aim in kind of year one in 2324. And then moving into year two, into the pilot year of really thinking about how do we match that against needs in our community, so a pilot engagement programme which is really focused on co-creation, so going into communities, working with them, understanding what their needs are and then helping them to develop projects which we then fundraise for. So that will include things like the pilot festivals and events testing process, and we will apply some, for some wider community engagement funding through some of the national lottery bodies, as from, for example, the Arts Council and other grants and foundations. By the time we get to October next year, October 2024, Culture Chelmsford will be turning its attention to, we have information, we have gaps in our knowledge field, we have an understanding of our sector, we have an understanding of our community needs, so we'll be turning our attention to some of the larger trusts and foundations, places like Esme Fairburn, who really want to invest in co-created, community-led projects, places like Heritage England and Heritage Fund and the other lottery bodies, to look for a much bigger and much deeper investment programme, that would lead us to April 25, being, hopefully being successful, in establishing a three-year cultural programme. In terms of that cultural programme, we don't know what it, what it'll include yet, but here are some of the things that we might look at, young people are going to be really integrated in this. Culture and health comes up time and time again, we're going to have some, some more stronger data around that, and we'll have some tested pilots around social prescribing, so it may be that that might come into a big place partnership bid through Arts Council England or other, but we'll also be looking at the things that we're, we are testing out through festivals, events and a co-created programme across the whole city, across the whole district, and really starting to build things like community champions in each of the areas around the district, so that Culture Chelmsford remains a really small and agile team, but that we work very extensively with building our contacts in communities and supporting those communities to take on some of these projects themselves and learn some of those skills. I think I'm going to stop there and I'm going to hand over to Mark.
Thank you, Claire. Just to end the presentation really on the recommendations and next steps for you as a group, there are two main recommendations off the back of that presentation. So I know last time we came to, we talked about having a task and finish group, which we decided actually probably wasn't the best way forward and make an alternative recommendation now. The two are, that Claire mentioned earlier in the presentation, a communities working group that would hold the trust and its partners to account to make sure the voices of local communities are heard and embedded across the whole piece. So we'd like to propose that there's cross-party representation on that communities working group, of which you could nominate from across different parties. And then the second thing is that the council's involvement in the strategy would be overseen by the policy board rather than the task and finish group, so therefore the policy board would kind of oversee our involvement, making sure that the trusts and the compact are delivering against its commitment and the council are getting alternative investment. Thank you.
Has anyone got any questions?
Thank you, Chair. I'm quite happy with the process that's been outlined, my question really is to, is to Claire Givaud. I'm someone who's very heavily involved professionally, working in the arts, as, as well as my, it's particularly music in my case, and I, what I, what I liked was the, the approach of bringing different bodies together. I certainly have come across, as I believe I said at a previous meeting, the arts being done in sort of silos and in a way that's perhaps too, almost too competitive, you're, you're competing for the same participants and same audiences at times, so I was pleased with that. What perhaps surprised me a little bit is that there were no sort of, in the presentation just given, and, and there's no sort of indication of, we're going to be, you know, approaching classical musicians and jazz musicians and visual arts and things like that. So- So how are we going to sort of organise this in a way that appeals to those different sectors?
Thank you. Really useful question, so thank you for that. And I'd like to talk to you afterwards about your involvement in the cultural sector. I think the answer comes to that through the mapping. We don't at this point know where our biggest employer of arts and culture is, apart from, you know, the obvious buildings that we have in the city. We don't know if most people work in the visual arts, we don't know if most people work in music. We don't have enough information yet to be able to really focus in on where should we make our priorities to invest in the capacity building or to invest in different sectors until we've done that piece of mapping. When that piece of mapping is done, then that will give us a much clearer identification of where should we put that investment first, what needs to grow and be strengthened, and then also where are the gaps and how do we fill some of those gaps? So that's absolutely going to come after the mapping. Hopefully that will be done by spring next year, so we'll have a much clearer idea. It would be really lovely to come back to this group and say, okay, there's 6,300 people working in the creative industries in Chelmsford, of which 56% are freelance and of which 23% of those are musicians. I'd love to be able to come back and say that. We don't have that data yet, but that's absolutely what we're trying to get to. So thank you for the question, and I hope to be able to come back and answer it properly at some point next year.
If I could just follow up, thank you very much. Yes, the list of organisations, I'm very pleased to hear that you've got some of the big hitters, Chelmsford Cathedral, Anglia Ruskin University. It's great you've got those on board, and I can, I could instantly name 12 smaller amateur organisations who, in their own way, will contribute just as much. So I think that, you know, there's intel on the ground from myself and people like me in our network, so maybe it would be good to have a chat afterwards. Because I'd love to see that it's not just that we've gone to the council and we've gone to the obvious big players, but that we really do tap into the rich, there's a lot of rich cultural diversity out there. Some of these organisations, there's only, there's only 12 people involved in them, and sometimes they're all retired, but they still, they still work wonders. So I'd love to see that list of organisations involved grow to get those smaller voices in there.
If I could just, I think that's really important as well, because it is about the balance between those organisations who are on the ground, who are doing fantastic work, and we need to, we need to hear what they need in terms of where the priorities are. From the strategic oversight group, the reason why those organisations are in that circle is because they have some kind of strategic oversight across the city. They are thinking 10 to 15 to 20 years ahead, and they're having conversations which affect how we develop as a city over the next 20 years. They've also got policy and strategy that they can influence, they've got boards, they've got trustees, they've got work that they can put culture in the heart of what they're trying to do. But as I said, we can't, this cultural compact doesn't exist without both sides working together. And the working groups are where we absolutely want to have those local voices. So I would definitely like to come back to you and make sure that we include some of those organisations you're talking about in the working groups, because the strategic oversight group will not, will not be able to prioritise without actually knowing what the needs are on the ground.
Are there any other questions? In that case, to be perfectly clear, I'll go through the three recommendations that are in the document. The first is that Chelmsford City Council continue to support the Chelmsford cultural strategy in its recommendations, which was commissioned and published on behalf of the entire district by the independent charity Culture Chelmsford. Do we all agree with that recommendation? The second in line with what is in the document, oversight and responsibility for reviewing the cultural strategy and the council's ongoing strategic support shifts to the Chelmsford Policy Board. Do we have agreement that that shifts to the Policy Board? Okay. And finally, a cross-party representation is nominated to sit on the community's working group, set up by the Cultural Chelmsford, to ensure consultation, engagement and investment is equitable, diverse and inclusive, with outcomes for all local communities. So this is a community's working group is set up. Do we agree with that?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask from how that would be filled, in a sense. So would it be the Policy Board here or more generally from the council as a whole?
I think what was suggested was cross-party from a selection of different people. So I don't know if you want, if you had a sort of vision as to what that looked like?
My assumption was that we'd approach each party to nominate a candidate to sit on it, so there's equal representation across all parties. So post this meeting, if there's an agreement, we'd come to you all to put someone forward to sit on that working group.
Do we agree with that recommendation? Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item 10, which now becomes nine. So the Cabinet Member for Growing Chelmsford Annual Report on Housing Delivery, please.
Thank you, Chair. This report provides key housing delivery statistics for the monitoring year April 22 to March 23. It follows the same format as previous reports and includes information on national and local initiatives relating to new housing supply. The report includes specific information relating to affordable housing, that is, housing which is made available at below market rents, sorry, below market levels. This includes affordable housing for rent, which is at least 20% below market rents, and not more than the local housing allowance levels in Chelmsford. It also includes shared ownership housing, which is sold at a share between 10 to 75% of the market value, with rent payable on the remaining part retained by a registered provider or a housing association. We can report that there's been an increase in the delivery of new affordable housing in this monitoring year compared to the previous year. And it's particularly pleasing to see the nine gypsy and traveller pitches in the document. The overall number of net new housing completions has increased slightly, but is still above the housing requirement figure in the local plan. Did I say decreased? Anyway, I think I said it should have decreased slightly, but it's still above the housing requirement. The number of new homes with planning permission has fallen this monitoring year. However, completions are still forecast to remain above the annual housing requirement as the number of new homes at pre-planning stage and within major applications has increased. Appendix one of the report provides a range of statistical information at all stages of the planning process. Since the report was drafted, the Leveling Up and Regeneration Bill has received royal assent. And appendix two of the report provides the council's response to one of the main elements of this Leveling Up and Regeneration Act, the Infrastructure Levy, which is a reform to the existing system of developer contributions. The consultation sought views on technical aspects of the design of the infrastructure levy, which will be introduced through regulations, which will themselves be consulted on before implementation. The feedback from the technical consultation is still being analysed, so it's not yet known when the consultation of the regulations will occur. Also, a further consultation took place in this monitoring year related to plan-making reforms. The 30th of June 25 is the deadline to submit plans under the current plan-making system and the date the council is working to submit the review of the local plan and representations on it to the Secretary of State. In terms of local initiatives, officers continue to maximise government funding streams to tackle rough sleeping and secure additional supported housing for single homeless people. In addition, monies have been secured to increase the temporary accommodation offer for homeless households and provide homes for households on Afghan resettlement schemes. This report provides an update on a range of initiatives and interventions to meet the priorities in the Chelmsford housing strategy, in addition to reporting on progress on the strategic sites supported by the Housing Infrastructure Fund. The delivery of housing, in particular additional affordable housing, remains a key priority of this council, and we will continue to respond to positively, to opportunities that support the delivery of housing and other essential infrastructure. So the report is for noting, I do have Liz Harris-Pest next to me, the author of the report, who I'm sure will be able to answer detailed questions. Thank you.
councillor Steele.
Thank you. So in terms of page 18, I was looking at some of the builds. It worries me that only 18% of the affordable rented housing is a three, four bedrooms, 18%. And I know we're short of three and four-bedroom housing. There's a statement on page 19 that the planning advice note seeks to address the oversupply of one-bedroomed houses. So question number one was, how will the planning advice note seek to address the oversupply of one-bedroom? Because it kind of seems to me that if we have control of whether we refuse or accept planning applications, if those planning applications for larger estates are going in with lots of one-bedroomed houses and very few three- or four-bedroomed houses, ought we not to be trying to get that amended and get more three to four? So I know the intent to try and get more three, four-bedroomed houses built, but how are we going to actually influence that? That's question number one. The other thing I was going to ask about was shared ownership. I think it says 78 shared ownership. Shared ownership worries me a bit, actually, and perhaps at this point, I do need to declare, maybe I need to declare a conflict of interest or an NRI, anyway. I know on just one small 40-dwelling estate, there's five shared ownership houses for sale, and they've been for sale a long time, and they struggle to sell them because they're leasehold and they're part-owned, and there are conditions put on them by, it's actually Home Group in this case. The interest for me is actually, I'm an executor of a will that's trying to sell one, although I'm not a beneficiary. Can I, is there any comment about share? I think they're kind of unpopular, shared housing. I know they're a way of buying cheap, but the resaleability, in my experience, is a problem. And if we've got empty housing association dwellings, and I'm saying, I just know five on one small estate, we've got, we've got empty houses that should be otherwise occupied, that they're a struggle to sell on. So some comment about shared housing, please.
The planning advice note, obviously we recognise the shortage of four-bedroom houses, that's why the planning advice note was put in place. And that seeks on those sites where the number of houses being built is above the number in the local plan, then we can now adjust the number of four-bed houses. So in, within the extra houses that are being put on that site, then there will be more four-bed houses going in. But it is something that we, you know.
How do, you can't adjust what's put in the application. How do you get the developers to bias more towards three, four-bedroomed houses?
I think probably the first point to say is that we now monitor applications against the mix that we're asking for from the Strategic Housing Needs Assessment. So previously, where that kind of shortfall in four beds came from was that there wasn't the same close monitoring of the mix that's advised in the needs assessment and what was coming through the planning process. That was partly contributed historically by the fact that a lot of housing associations or registered providers, until recently, have been unwilling to build threes and four beds because of fears of rent arrears, especially when the affordable rent product was introduced. They've kind of lessened those fears. We're increasing our monitoring through the planning process, so there will now be comments about what the mix is that a developer's proposing vis-à-vis what the need is. The planning advice note was only created for a particular circumstance, and that was obviously where there were, on strategic allocations, more homes being provided than the around figure that was allocated in the local plan. So it only applies in a very kind of bespoke circumstance. The main thing is that we look at each planning application when it comes in now and comment where there's a large diversion from the mix that our housing needs assessment is saying we need. We just had a new strategic needs assessment that was just published probably about three or four weeks ago. And it does say that that four-bed need is still probably around 10%. The problem was we weren't getting that 10% for so many years in the past. So the really critical thing, and you'll see it in planning reports now, is that there is a kind, that comparison at this stage when, when members are considering a planning application, that there is that consideration about what that affordable housing mix looks like and what it needs to be, and that's brought much more forward. In terms of the implementing the planning advice note and how we secure that additionality, that's through a Section 106 agreement. Again, it's through negotiation with the developer, but we'll secure it through that planning obligation when we sign it on that Section 106 agreement for that specific development site. Is that, is that helpful?
Yes, thank you. So what you're saying is we are in a position where we could refuse an application if we don't like what they're putting forward, and that will influence them then to amend their application. Is that where we, is that where we get to? Is that the leverage we have?
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't say whether the council would take on and appeal purely on that basis, but that's absolutely, the message we're giving to developers is, this is critical to us, we need this mix to be right, otherwise we're just storing up a problem for ourselves further down the line. And that's the purpose of a housing needs assessment, is to do the maths for us, work out the population growth and what we need in terms of what's on our housing register, as well as how stock turns over. And as you know, through the housing strategy, there's been a lot more scrutiny on that and how that, how we move forward with that. And then also in the local plan review, I'm sure we'll be looking again in terms of the planning policy. We didn't have in, in the reason justification or the upper tier of the planning policy, an affordable housing mix. It's in the planning obligations, SPD, but you know how planning works, it's all kind of weights at different sort of stages. And so we'll obviously said in the topic paper when we went out on issues and options consultation, that we will be given sort of consideration to moving that up the policy agenda. So that means moving it up into probably the main document and really giving that the attention it needs.
I think councillor Dobson, you wanted to ask a question?
I had a second question about shared ownership.
And leasehold.
Sorry? Unless councillor Dobson's following up my original point. I had an issue over the saleability of shared ownership, and I wonder if we know how many empty shared ownership houses are sitting out there in Chelmsford?
Well, I'll pass that over to Liz Harris-Pest in a moment. Just to finish off, sorry, Jeremy Potter, Special Planning Services Manager, good evening. So just to finish off on the size of units, obviously not every site is able to accommodate large, large units as well. So you need to take into account that there may be, especially on previously developed land, on brownfield sites and in urban areas, it's unlikely that you're going to get, just by, inherently by the type of development, the mix that is in the, is in the report and in the Strategic Housing Needs Assessment. So just bearing in mind for future planning decisions, they need to be, it needs to be practically be able to be achieved on the site. We wouldn't be refusing a planning application on a very sustainable site in the middle of the city centre because it hasn't got four-bedroom houses on it, if that, if that just makes sense. But overall, yeah, absolutely, when we're looking at overall, and the point that was being made in terms of the monitoring, now we are being able to monitor in a way that being made in terms of the monitoring, now we are being able to monitor in a way that flags up those issues much quicker to us and enable us to make that action through determination and planning applications. I'll just hand you over to Liz, who'd just pick up the shared ownership matter.
Yeah, I'm not actually aware, to be honest, that we have an issue with shared ownership housing. I recall about 18 months ago where we were looking at one of the actions from the housing strategy was to look at whether we could flip any empty shared ownership dwellings, especially sort of the larger properties, the twos or three bedrooms, over to affordable housing for rent. And when we inquired with all of the providers that had shared ownership properties, they were all still selling off plan at that point. Now, that would be the new sales rather than resales, but it's not, not been an issue that's been brought to our attention. Most registered providers are really keen to still provide shared ownership, and they're very keen because of the demand that they report to us for that product. Now, obviously the product can vary quite considerably depending on what the initial sale, the share for the property is, obviously the type of the property, and also what the rent on the remainder would be, because most, most properties in Chelmsford are, in recent terms, have been capped at 2.75% rental on, but they obviously increase at an agreed rate each year. So it just can depend on, in most, like any property that's for, for sale on the open market, albeit with a discount, it can depend on location, demand. But no, we're not, I'm not aware. Obviously, if you're talking about Home Group, I'm one, it could be one of a few sites actually that you might be talking to. So if you wanted to just have a chat with me offline about where those properties are, where you think there's a particular problem, because as I say, nothing's been fed back to us by registered providers. And we've never, yeah, we failed in our efforts to try and flip some of those units over because they'd all been sold off plan. So we weren't aware that there's an issue unless that's something more recently that's a problem, or it might be very bespoke to a block of flats and a certain leasehold agreement. But they should follow a standard leasehold agreement that's produced by Homes England. So again, if there shouldn't be any kind of gremlins in that leasehold agreement that makes that one stand out as a particular problem. So it is definitely something I could follow on after this meeting, if that's helpful.
I think we'll take that out of the meeting now, this is a.
I do, I'm sorry, this is a scrutiny committee, so I do have a follow up point to make that's relevant to that, if I may, chairman.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to say, I, I've come across it on one example, but also I think leasehold is losing favour in the market now. I think you, you must accept that, I think we've talked about this before, Jeremy. But I think the, the relevant point here with the shared ownership and leasehold is that there is no incentive for the housing association to sell, get sold, because they continue to get their service charge, even if the house is empty, from the owner who's unable to sell their share. So it worries me that there is, there is a lack of incentive. An empty house is an empty house and there's no penalty on the housing association with that house being empty. Ultimately, there's a penalty on the owner because they end up paying double rates or whatever, they can't sell it, and that's what worries me. And I will talk to you about it afterwards, if you like. Thank, thank you, chairman.
I just, yeah, I'm just finally on that matter. I mean, you know, there are certain issues with, you know, the, the sort of affordable housing for sale, because as, as Liz just said, they, they meet a demand, they don't make, they don't meet a housing need. But we are, as all councils are, required within our affordable housing mix to provide these. So although we probably, you know, would like the 35% to be all social rented affordable housing, we are required through, you know, the government's national planning policy framework to ensure that we have a mix of affordable housing, just to make that point. Thank you.
councillor Dobson.
Thank you, chair. I've just got two, hopefully fairly short questions. I know from the stats that there are a number of office buildings that have actually transferred over to residential. And I just wondered with the, after the pandemic, et cetera, what the future is of Chelmsford really as for commercial office, office accommodation within the, you know, within the city area. Do you want the second question now, or do you want to answer that one first?
Through, through, you both. So yeah, if I answer that question first and then we can move on to the next one. I mean, that, there's no doubt it's been a contraction in the office market. I mean, that's not just in Chelmsford, that's everywhere. And especially older types of office use, they have tended to be lost. And there's a combination, obviously, of post-COVID people working at home. There's a whole series of quite, quite dynamic market. That isn't to say that offices aren't still required and we see, you know, Stuart will maybe pick up that point. We see, you know, a number of co-working spaces being opened up in the city, that it's a different type of office. It isn't your kind of large plate, single organisation office, it's a different type of offer. So I think that will continue, but there will be a contraction, you know, and we've seen that through the changes of uses that we've seen. One thing to note is that the permitted development change of use of office buildings means that we can't get affordable housing from them, which is a loss to us. You know, we're not getting affordable housing through that route. And secondly, we don't get any other kind of planning contributions, or very few planning contributions through that route. It's quite narrow what we can ask for. And also through the kind of vacant building credit, they don't tend to pay SILL either. So those, those units tend to have a situation where we have very little control over, over them. Stuart, I don't know whether you want to just come in on the wider sort of point in terms of in office market?
Yeah, thanks, Jeremy. Just on the conversion of residential to offices, from a, from an economic development perspective, it's, I think it's a good thing, because it's balanced out the office market in Chelmsford, we had too much space. And we've lost some of that space to residential, which has brought people into the city centre to live, and they spend their money in other businesses in the city centre. So from that perspective, it's a good thing. We've still got some good quality office accommodation available in various locations in the city centre. And as, as Jeremy said, we've, we've got about eight co-working spaces in Chelmsford. So the vision just by the railway station has expanded. Create, which was the Criterion House on Parkway, has recently opened. Patch, Grace Brewery Yards, we've got this. I think we've just seen a shift in the mix of the local economy, actually. And so the creation of new residential properties is a good thing, and that balancing of the office market is just a natural balancing that we're seeing in Chelmsford.
Okay, thank you. My second question is really, for those large developments that are sort of, you know, required to provide affordable housing, in view of sort of increasing costs and et cetera, are you finding developers are actually coming back with viability issues with providing the required amount of affordable housing? Or is, are we sort of managing to kind of keep our head above water in that respect?
So viability is starting to become an issue, there's no doubt about that. And in, on certain types of development, that's more acute than others. So on the brownfield sites, the flatted brownfield sites, in particular where they go over four stories, then because building regulations have changed, you know, post-Grenfell and the need to ensure safe routes, that all adds cost and doesn't increase the saleable space within, within them. So I would definitely say the market in that regard, viability is certainly coming to the fore. On, probably more on greenfield sites, that's just starting, starting to happen as well. So we, it'd be interesting to see next year where we are in terms of ensuring that we can hold the line in relation to the, the provision 35%. But as you hopefully all know, you know, we are negotiating, affordable housing is our, one of our, you know, biggest priorities as a council, when we're negotiating section 106s, that, that is always at the front of our minds, and that's what we tell developers, that achieving and maintaining that is one of the most important things that this council has to do. So yeah, we'll be in a situation where I think by this time next year, we have a better idea about where inflationary pressures are happening. Obviously, inflation going down is going to help that in terms of construction costs and build more confidence in the market to stabilise values.
I was just going to ask, you know, my follow up perhaps was, how is the council going to address that? Because obviously affordable housing is a priority, but if it just makes a development unviable, then you stand to lose the build itself because developers aren't going to pick it up.
There's always, planning is always a balance, as you know, councillor Dobson, and I'm afraid each, each individual case will need to be looked at on its merit and balanced therefore. So it's a bit difficult to give you a blanket approach because all sites are different. It depends on what they're, you know, the land's worth, what they pay for the land, the construction costs, all of those things are very different. So I wouldn't want to sort of say one approach would be suitable, it would be all treated on their merit.
Okay, thank you. I didn't expect a crystal ball, it's okay. I perhaps put you on the spot a little bit there. Thanks very much.
councillor Fuller, I think, had a question and then we'll come to you.
Did you mean me? Chris Davidson, sitting in for Jude Deakin. I just wanted to welcome Mike's questions about affordable housing and to make clear, in relation to the shared ownership, as Jeremy said, our hands are tied. And it's not just shared ownership, it's the first homes as well. So the government, through the, through the law, whole matrix of laws in relation to planning and housing that it puts in place, ties our hands in terms of how we can deliver affordable housing. Those first homes, we don't think are helpful, but we have to, we have to have regard to those requirements. The shared ownership, I agree, is not great. As Jeremy says, it meets a demand, it, it doesn't address the need we have caused by a housing crisis in Chelmsford. So we've got people without housing, they need affordable homes to rent, and it doesn't help them with that. So yeah, it'd be great if we could get rid of those requirements and therefore have 35% affordable housing that is a social rent or affordable rent. But the, the rules don't permit that. Equally, in terms of the mix, that's driven, as Jeremy or Liz said, by the SHMA and the, what the need assessment is. But what has been done is the planning note, was it a planning note, if I've got that terminology right, which enables us to squeeze as much as possible out in terms of larger properties. So I think you're right, those are key issues, but they're key issues where there's a limit to what the council can achieve, and we're pushing that, I think, as hard as we can.
Yes, carry on.
Thank you. I think the issue I was trying to raise, and it's not dissimilar to something councillor Robinson said at a meeting, a, a, a different meeting, is the issue with shared ownership isn't the initial sale, it's the ongoing problem. And I think councillor Robinson talked about, for example, the good work that had been done in working with CHP to reduce the time between a house being vacated and the next tenant coming in. And I think they were talking about halving the time, to reduce the number of empty houses in Chelmsford. And I, I think there's an opportunity here, perhaps. If there are empty shared ownership houses, we need to understand what they are and see if we can help on that problem, because having empty houses when there's a damn great queue of people needing a house isn't a good thing.
Can I respond very briefly, just to say that I think, I think Stephen was talking about rental property rather than shared ownership property. But I completely agree that we want all the, the gaps, for whatever reason, to be reduced, because we don't want empty property, because we have people in need of property and we want them, to get them into that property. But the more fundamental point is, I'd rather not have the shared ownership component at all, if we could, if we could maximise the amount that is for rental to meet that need, at least until we've got through the backlog of need for that, which is demonstrated by the number of people in affordable, sorry, in temporary accommodation, waiting for affordable rent.
Just to intercede there, I think that there's an issue that you're bringing up about shared ownership, which probably needs some further investigation, because at the moment it's anecdotal, but obviously that would be something that might be worth looking at. So I think that might be something that we could take away from that conversation. Can I just move on to councillor Davies?
Thank you, chair. My query refers to the former Runwall Hospital. So it's currently in phase five of completion, but I have noticed that there are a number of plots that have been given over for private rent. Could either of you confirm whether that is private rent that's been bought by the council to rent out at market rate, or whether that has been kind of swallowed up by some sort of private equity fund that will then rent out to, at market rates? My only query would then be, is it just on that particular site, or is it sort of like a wider issue throughout the whole of Chelmsford?
I don't believe it's the council that's purchased those dwellings, or I can imagine it might be a private investment of some form, doing private rented. Is that, is that on the phase four of the development, as you're talking about, the one that was, because phase five, I think it's just got.
So it is on, it is on phase five. Obviously, phase five is under construction at the moment, but if you was to look at the site plan within the marketing suite or on the website, is a huge number of dwellings towards the back end of the development are now, that they have PR on them, which, which does stand for private, private rented. I just, just kind of like a query as to whether that is just on that site, or whether that's also on other developments as well.
So as Liz just said, I mean, there's nothing to stop, you know, an institutional investor buying units off plan from a developer to rent privately. And we wouldn't necessarily be notified or know anything about that, because in planning terms, it's the tenure in terms of market occupier or market rent, there is no, we don't, you know, discriminate between the two. I mean, I would say just generally speaking, the kind of private rental market and P, and, and has, is declining in some regards, because that's where we're seeing a problem in terms of some of our residents who are being priced out of the market because, because there isn't the supply. That isn't to say that there aren't new products that developers are looking at, and this kind of, you know, the build to rent product is something that we have started to see more of on new build, but not necessarily just flipping market, normal market housing to rented housing. We haven't really seen, yeah, yeah, actually on Waterside, we had a block on Waterside, actually that went that way, yeah. So it may well be that that's in the market at the moment, that's one thing that, you know, institutional develop, investors and developers are thinking about, because it cash flows developers. If they can sell, you know, a whole block or a number of units off plan to, you know, that's cash flowing them rather than the, the problems that probably are in the market being a bit sticky in the. being a bit sticky in the market, getting private market sales off the ground. So it's something we keep an eye on, but it isn't something that we can control.
Councillor Young.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I just wanted to thank officers for the report. And now I think I'm beginning to understand it after seeing it five times now, I think. I can work my way through it, it does help. I particularly just wanted to talk about section seven, which is the national initiatives update, where we've, due to the agility, I think, of officers, managed to secure funding to help not just ourselves but partners to actually tackle homelessness and that side of it. But I just wondered about, you know, about how much work that actually gives you when you've got so much initiative funding coming through all the time and just wondered how that was managed really. I'm always conscious of the work that goes into all of these, when it's initiative-type funding.
Yeah, I mean, thank you, thank you for your comments and we do appreciate the report can be, it's quite a long investment of time and so we thank members for their continued support of the annual housing report. I think in some regards, doing bids is quite time-consuming, I've got to say, and, you know, throughout our directorate, you do have a situation where we're continuously faced with putting bids in with, you know, a potentially relatively small chance of getting the money and competing against a whole, you know, virtually all the other providers or councils as well. I think what we normally do is we take a view as to, you know, our success, our potential for success, and then we will prioritise those that we feel that we would be successful for or those areas where we have a real need and then where we will always try and apply and that would be the case for, you know, what's been set out in the report. I think that's probably where we are with that at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Can I just ask one, following on from councillor Young? How much has this funding been worth? Because I don't note a figure attributed to the funding that's been secured and I just wondered why that was.
Just to clarify, sometimes I specifically haven't put it in because although we might be the organisation that's bid for the grant and it might be paid to us in certain cases, especially around some of the supported housing groups or the specialist groups like the, you know, money targeting at rough sleepers, it's also paid out to other organisations. So sometimes it's just a bit of sensitivity about what that level of capital funding or resourcing is, so that's why the amount hasn't been specified in every case. So it simply does vary depending on what the average kind of, there's normally an average grant rate that the government kind of pitches at indirectly and it will depend on whether you're looking at supported housing groups, single homeless groups, size of the property, et cetera, that varies that. So whilst the headline money for the big HIF funding is known and in the public, much more in the public domain, some of the more localised funding schemes for the specialist groups, we tend to just not necessarily report individual amounts because it can relate to business plans of different organisations, that they would like that just to be treated with some sensitivity. So it's not really a secret such, but it does have sensitivities when they're competing with others for that same sort of funding pool. So that's just the reason why it's not in there. That doesn't answer your question, I know, but it's fine to give you a reason why that amount's not in there.
No, it's just that, as was pointed out, the effort that goes into making the bids, you'd like to think that the worthwhile outcome is achieved.
They are always worthwhile and in terms of, you know, when we receive that money, we will make that money work as hard as it possibly can, you can be assured of that.
And yes, I echo the thanks, I think very comprehensive and given that the recommendation was that we just note the contents of the report, I think we've done a thorough job of dissecting it, so thank you very much for that. So that is the recommendation that we note that, but I think there's been some spin-off work from that which has been raised that probably is of interest. I had a feeling that there was something being done about leasehold because of some of the problems that have been coming through the housing market and some of the leases that have actually been utilised, as it were, probably not very wisely. Okay, thank you very much for that. We'll now move on to what now is the new item 10.
Obviously, these slides are new to you, so I will pause to give you a chance to read the slides when they appear. I'm here tonight as a cabinet member for a growing Chelmsford and as you can see on the screen, my responsibilities cover those sort of four key areas. As it says at the bottom there, the South Essex Parking Partnership is part of the directorate, but you'll receive a separate report on that at another time. I would tonight like to thank all the officers in the directorate for all that they do across a wide range of responsibilities, from blue plaques to blue badge parking, from TPOs to TROs, from pylons to panels, from the bid to biodiversity, from permitted development to permitted parking, from changing places to changing perceptions. So if we deal with each area in turn... The slide shows just how well officers are doing and how well the system is working, picking out the fact that 90% of decisions are issued in time, that 78% of appeal decisions are found in our favour. This area of the directorate is working really hard. However, there are challenges, as shown on the screen. The introduction of biodiversity net gain will add an important layer to the planning system. The Building Safety Act will seek to reshape the building industry, its culture and practices, following on from the Grenfell disaster. Clearly, these are headline numbers and they don't tell all the work behind different applications. Clearly, a lot more work might be done for one application than for another, so the workload is still heavy. The income is down on last year, which was 1.6 million, and the applications are down on last year. Last year, there were 1,903 applications, so you can see the effect of the crisis has had on applications. But nonetheless, things are healthy, we're meeting good targets there and you can see just how good the average turnaround time is. So the work being done in development management is very encouraging and we're very pleased with the work that's being done there. Moving on to spatial planning. Spatial planning covers many different areas. Over the last year or so, we've dealt with a number of different master plans and also the officers have had to deal with a number of nationally significant projects as well, such as the National Grid's Norwich to Tilbury project, the A12 widening scheme, the Longfield Solar Farm, and they've had to respond to government consultations on national planning policy and a new infrastructure levy that I mentioned earlier. As you can see, we are maintaining our housing supply. A big piece of work is taking place in the north of the city with the Chelmsford Garden Community and that is moving on a pace with all the developers working together. The Rams project, I guess, is often overlooked. This is, developers have to pay contribution towards the Rams project where appropriate and as you can see, that has raised a significant sum of money to help improve the situation along our coast, to help birds and other wildlife in their habitats and we've been able to increase the number of ranges from two to three. And again, it reflects the quality of our officers, the fact that we have taken responsibility for this project on behalf of the other local authorities. As you well know, we are in a review of our local plan and again, it is a review, we've been here before, officers are experts in their field. We have to keep reminding ourselves just how fortunate a council we are when 40%, only 40% of local authorities have actually submitted a local plan in the last five years. So we are very much ahead of the game. Our local plans are well-known and well-respected and we are very pleased with the work that's been done on the ongoing situation with our local plan. Specifically would like to mention the travelling showperson planning advice note, that is very much a groundbreaking document that you won't find in many other local authorities and we're very pleased that we've taken the initiative on that. And it's good that the Little Baddeux neighbourhood plan has been approved and we're now in the process of doing the referendum for Sandon. The news about car parks is good, we have encouraging levels of income above our estimates and we're seeking to raise more money this year than we did last year. We do continue to spend money on our car parks. That 90,000 for High Chelmer will be used for the waterproofing of the top deck and there'll also be money from the South Essex Parking Partnership also will be going towards improving the stairwells and the staircases as well. But we continue to receive those accreditations for the park mark in our car parks. And again, we take responsibility to manage the park and ride sites as well. Economic development covers a wide range of different areas. I thank councillor Simon Goldman particularly for his work with the bid and we do collect the levy on their behalf. As you can see, a lot of work has been done with businesses in the district, over 500 have been supported with advice, training guidance, workshops, renewal plans. And as we heard earlier, those co-working sites like a patch are going well. The North Essex Economic Board chaired by councillor Marie Goldman involves seven local authorities, aiming to deliver economic opportunities for our residents and bring in investment. In terms of the events that we've put on, I did attend the Skill Fest over at Rittal and it was great to see all the children engaging with the different companies, the charities and the education providers at that event. A very positive event it was too. There are some very exciting projects taking place around the district. But I think we do have to keep reminding ourselves about the success of the SIL. Many local authorities do not have SIL in place, but we do and we've raised an amazing number of 35 million pounds since 2014. And that is used for a number of different projects, some listed there. Again, I attended the Trinity Road School last week for the official opening as such and it was a pleasure to see just how proud the pupils and the contractors were in that building. And it's going to be really well-used by the school in the years going forward as the Waterside building expands down by the river. Economic development also covers heritage and our conservation areas. We have 40 blue plaques in Chelmsford and there's also the public art and wayfinding signage, urban design. And we've gone a long way to communicate what's happening in our public realm projects as well so that residents and businesses are well-informed. Our access officer is working hard to improve facilities and improve awareness. We have six changing places in the city. A mobile unit was rescued after it had been left underused in a car park. So we do have an amazing group of dedicated officers who go above and beyond to get the funding, to get the resources. funding, to get the resources, to get the environment, to get the outcomes that our residents can be proud of. As cabinet member, I also attend a number of other groups. There is the Patrol Group, Parking and Traffic Regulation outside London, that meets occasionally to look at parking issues, the Essex Coastal Forum, building on the Rams Project as well, and the Cycling Forum, among others. So I hope that this short presentation gives you just an idea of the positive impact that this Directorate is having on this Chelmsford district. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Fuller. Are there any questions? Could I just ask one? In terms of infrastructure, I mean, Chelmsford is growing, as you've pointed out, hugely. Things like sewage works and things like that, are they also being increased? Are we having new facilities to support the new housing?
It may not surprise you to know, I'm not an expert on sewage, so, but perhaps I know someone who is. That's quite an introduction, thank you. So absolutely, you're absolutely right. We have commissioned what's called a water cycle study, so specialist consultants are working with us and consulting with Anglia Water to work out where the capacity and headroom is in our existing water recycling centres. So any increases that are required as part of new development are factored into their business planning, so yes, the, in short, short answer is yes.
Yeah, it was just some years ago, I was shown a site over at the new Bealy that was going to be the new site, and I have seen no building or anything going on to date, so does it mean that ours currently has the capacity, or are we going to have to grow another one?
So the current, the main water recycling centre at Brookend has significant capacity within it to accommodate our existing growth and to accommodate our future growth as well. There are smaller water recycling centres around the council's area that are, that don't have as much capacity, and they tend to be the smaller, more rural ones, such as Great Lees, and South Warden Ferrars has some constraints as well, but the main, the main water recycling centre has headroom.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think really, again, that was a report, sorry councillor Steele.
So I don't know if I missed it, but did the slides go out before the meeting? I mean, it would be advantageous if we could see something like this before the meeting. We haven't really had the opportunity to read them in depth, though. Could I ask, can we, is it a matter of policy that information should go out before the meeting to give the scrutiny committee? No? Well, perhaps it should be a matter of policy, because it does seem, it's a bit difficult to scrutinise something when we see it for the first time on the night.
Certainly, we can build into pre-agenda asking people if they're preparing a presentation. Certainly, we can ask that if people are preparing to present a presentation, that we get that circulated beforehand.
Thank you. Are there any other questions before we move on? Report on the decisions taken under delegation to the chief executive.
This is the standard report, just recording the three decisions, urgency decisions that have been taken by the chief executive in this period. Just to remind you that these are fully consulted, and this is purely for noting by the committee. Thank you.
Are there any comments that anyone wants to make? I can move on to item 12 in the work programme, which I think we've covered partly. Obviously, we've got today's agenda we've gone through, and then the 12th of February is our next meeting, and we have cabinet member for Greener and Safer Chelmsford, a presentation for Safer Chelmsford by Spencer Clark for the Public Protection, who's the Public Protection Manager, a presentation on Essex Violence and Vulnerability Unit by the Deputy Chief Constable, and I think there we've got the Essex County Wide Traveller Unit presentation as well. So quite a full meeting on the 12th, and I don't think we need to take any questions on that. We will precirculate the documents previous to the meeting. So I'll now move on to urgent business, and just go round the room. Has anyone got any urgent business that hasn't been declared previous?
It's not so much urgent business as a question on the previous item, just is there any preliminary ideas of where we might be able to fit the remaining things that haven't been allocated to a specific meeting, when they might happen, or if they might happen in this term?
So, sorry, what exactly were you...
So the youth engagement one, and the theatre refurbishment.
So theatre refurbishment, we'll be scheduling the first meeting once we've confirmed the membership of that group and circulated the terms of reference, so we'll get that one moving. The youth engagement, I'm pleased you asked about that one, although it is, it's nominated for Mark Diath to look at, as you can appreciate, it's a far-reaching project. I think officers are struggling to determine what might be the most useful approach to take to that, because we did a previous review on involvement, youth involvement, and determined that the council didn't have a key role in that sense. So we have got some ideas, it's not been forgotten. I'd like to think that we could bring some proposals to the next meeting for you to consider, but yes, very much like to make sure we do it in this period.
Yeah, just as a final point, I think the situation has materially changed, at least in the fact that there is now no longer a committee at the county level that is responsible for this, and I think it might fall to us to consider what we can do in that short period to fix a deficit, if you know what I mean.
I mean, certainly, we can give some considerations to things that we can do within our resources, but it's important to remember that we shouldn't be taking on work that the county council can no longer perform, unless we have resources to do that ourselves.
Councillor Steele.
I've got, yeah, I've got one last item as well. In the February meeting, we're looking at ECTU, Essex County Wide Traveller Units. I mean, given this is a scrutiny committee to scrutinise Chelmsford City Council issues, ECTU is an Essex County Council service, isn't it? Why is that coming to our scrutiny committee? Or have I misread that?
So the overview and scrutiny committee has two real functions. One is about scrutinising things, but another is about understanding our relationship with. So we have a relationship with that unit, and it's about making sure that we have an understanding in how those two things join. I can't remember exactly who it was, but it was certainly a member that asked that this should be referred to the committee, so we're working to make that happen. I don't know whether whoever asked for that to happen. Councillor Leung, thank you.
I didn't ask, but I can remember. And it was to do with understanding how the relationship worked between the city council, the police, and the traveller unit when we had illegal incursions on to ground, and that's where we came. And that's the reason why it's coming up within the police, the same evening of the police, because it's about understanding, and so that councillors would have a better overview of what to do in those circumstances, and that was where we were coming from.
And of course, it's right that we have a memorandum of understanding, I believe, as to how that operates, even if it's operated by somebody else. And just as a point of protocol, I agree councillor Steele, that we need to have documents before so that we can scrutinise them, so that point is taken. Likewise, if somebody leads this meeting and doesn't feel that we have addressed things in the way we should, as to the point you made at the very start of the meeting, it would probably be very helpful if that was done at the time, so that we can clarify any misunderstandings when they arise, rather than wait. So I'll just make that point, because if there's anything that isn't clear tonight about what we've done and what we've approved, please say so now, then we can address it straight away if it needs to be addressed. Okay, that's lovely. So I'm going to close the meeting now. Thank you very much for your attendance, and thank you very much for all the hard work of the officers that have come and given us all the information. Thank you.